You talked about Second Avenue for the project. I know there's a church right on the corner of Second Avenue.
Right.
So, does that mean that you're gonna be past, you know, on the lower side of that? Or you're gonna try to take some of the property of the church? And number two, you talked about the hoop houses. I think the hoop houses are all on First Avenue, not Second. I think there is one that went up on Second, but there's about four on First Avenue.
Right.
On one side of First Avenue. Now, one side of First Avenue is not occupied at all. So, I'm wondering, did you consider using that vacant property? Well, I'm sure you know the area, you know, because it's not occupied at all on one side of First Avenue. Will there, as similar to what the young man just asked, will there be employment opportunities within this three-year period for East Cleveland if they are qualified to work, you know? But will it be employment opportunities for any East Clevelanders?
Oh, Allison, first, the first question.
And my other question is, who is on the Greater Suburban Council of the City of East Cleveland?
Do you defer that to the mayor?
No, to the council. That's the council.
To my knowledge, no one. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I can answer the technical questions of the beginning of your questions, and I will defer the employment questions to those who know that better than I do. We did, when we were looking at this land, we were trying to, we wanted to, you know, even before some of the hoop houses went up, we were concerned with trying to keep the apartment building and not disrupt the church. And looking at other options, especially once we saw the hoop houses coming up, we saw that, wow, some of the land that appeared vacant no longer was. So, we did charge our engineering firm, the engineering consultant, with looking at the vacant property to the north of Second and to the south of First. And the way the sewers that we have to pick up coming up Hayden, we have to tie those in. And there's a lot of utilities on Second, a lot of utilities on Hayden. We couldn't make the crossings in order to use those properties to the north and to the south. And we couldn't put some on one side of the street and some on the others. It just was not technically feasible. So, we looked at, oh, I think we had eight options at one meeting, and it all came back to that we need to be in the center of these two streets. So, we are having various meetings with the agencies involved with the hoop house. And as I think Joe mentioned earlier, trying to minimize the conflicts and find a win-win situation for that.
And I will speak briefly to the employment question by pointing you to two things. Number one, in regards to contracting, the sewer district, for some time, has been involved in what's called the Business Opportunity Program. And what that does is it provides an opportunity for minority-owned and women-owned businesses to bid on all of our contracting opportunities. That's the first thing. Second of all, the sewer district in the past year and a half has begun what I think is a pretty innovative pilot program called the Good Neighbor Ambassador Program. And what that does is, in addition to the work we're doing in East Cleveland, as hopefully my presentation kind of describes, you know, we're doing a lot of work throughout the city. Okay? Some of that work is good in Glenville. So, Good Neighbor Ambassador Program is in its, it's still in its infancy, but essentially what it does is it seeks out individuals for employment with the sewer district who are either unemployed or underemployed, and who are from an area where the sewer district will be doing a significant amount of work. Okay? So, we began the program in Glenville because we're doing some tunnels and different work in Glenville. And to this point, we've hired, I'm just giving you a ballpark number, probably about fourteen ambassadors, okay? And without getting too deep into weeds, what the program is, is they're given an opportunity, basically, you know, close to full-time work with the district, where they're given soft skills training, the opportunity to look for full-time work, potentially with the district or with another entity. And then, day-to-day, they're out in the community where our projects are taking place, and whether it's going door-to-door, letting people, you know, know about the projects, cleaning lawns, picking up trash in these areas where the sewer district is gonna be. We want to make our footprint as beneficial to the community as possible. And that's why the title of the program is the Good Neighbor Ambassador Program. Now, I don't want to oversell, I don't know if we're going to do the program again in East Cleveland. I would say that, to me, it makes sense to do that since we're gonna be doing this level of work here. But in regards to employment opportunities, you know, this is something, again, that's very unique, that we're one of the few, and really, only one, that I know is doing it. And so, certainly taking that into consideration.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, so we're working with Burtonville Park Community Development Corporation in the Kingsland Neighborhood, so we're gonna be doing a lot of work in that area. And so, we're going to be expanding the Good Neighbor Ambassador Programs there, and we're gonna be bringing in some of those residents and hopefully training them and giving them some full-time employment. So, you know, working with this, with the group of residents and getting them more involved with this project and educating them, you know, hopefully we can maybe expand the Good Neighbor Ambassador Program in East Cleveland, get some training for those folks in here, and get them, you know, hired on full-time positions. So, it could be a really good fit for the district and the Good Neighbor Ambassadors in this city.
Okay. I wanna thank the New York City Sewer District folks coming out. Appreciate it. Congratulations are well received. And that concludes.
Thank you guys for the opportunity. Thank you.
Now, we're down to the court on council committee. Okay?
We just had a meeting. Really great meeting.
Nobody here.
How's my margin?
Yeah, at the last council meeting, I said we wanna have a meeting with personal appointments to see the employment situation with the city. And right now, we haven't met because we haven't heard back from the information we requested from the mayor. How many employees in the city, how much they're making, how many full-time? Some have alluded to me that's two employees in the mayor's office making almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, we don't like to deal with rumors and yin and yang and gossip. We asking for the facts. Now, that was two weeks ago we asked for that information. And we have not, we have not got that information. So, I can't, I don't waste my time having meetings without the information. So, I'm gonna have our clerk Tracy send another memo up there. This is government. This is a corporation. We have to stay focused on the business. So, she'll take me two weeks to get that information. And I think that information is gonna be quite rebuild. Madam Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you. It's Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Contracts and Properties Committee has not met as of yet. We have had some dialogue with the administration regarding liens that are placed on the city that don't enable us to transact with the land bank and other necessary items that need to come out of the Contracts and Properties Committee. However, our contracts will still go forward, but property transactions will be on hold until further notice. It's my hope and my desire that the City of East Cleveland does rebound due to our financial situation. But, you know, let me remind this, this community that good government makes a community better. Responsible residents make a community better, and everybody working collectively. Terminal does not get anything done. Not having an imagination will not get anything done. If you're being creative, but if you don't be creative, you won't get anything done as well. So, it's my goal that this council in its entirety take care of business and move the city forward in the way we should move it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
I'm the chairman of the Health and Safety Committee. We wanted to have a meeting today, but I couldn't make it, so we have to schedule a meeting for another day. Just a few more quarters. Any proclamation?
Under proclamations. Because everyone's aware, Council Wheeler lost his mother last week. And on behalf of all of the council, Council Wheeler's family has been in politics for a long, long time. And we didn't think it was necessary to create a proclamation and have a lot of old standardized things with, you know, a lot of politics. And we wanted to do something really special for him. And we felt what better place than in our own council chambers? We created something really special, a little something we ourselves created for you that nobody else has had. And this is something special from all of us to the heart. We're almost like family. We fight, and we respect, and we agree, and we disagree. And this comes from the heart from all the councils here in the council. Tom, always remember, when someone you love becomes a memory, the memory becomes a treasure. It will be the little things that we will remember, the quiet moments, the smiles, the laughter. And although it may seem hard right now, it will be the memories of these little things that help to push away the pain and bring the smiles back again. This is from Barbara Thomas, that Daniel Martin, Nanceel Baker, Brandon King, and of course, your favorite painting in the black, Councilwoman.
Is it black?
Yeah, that's right. And then we have something else in front of us for you. And then you can open this, and you want to make sure. And we know that you're big. So, as you open it as well, you can have a picture of each, you don't put it on the side of your mother. It also holds photos. And there's also for trinkets that you might have owned. All right.
Hold it up. She's holding it up. I want you to hold it up.
I'll make sure, put this back up so you don't get it sprained.
I want to.
And this line.
I want to thank council. My mom was in gate. She reacted to kitchen table. She knew everything that was going on in the city, sitting at the kitchen table. She raised eight boys, and all of us have been in politics. And that's why I said, one thing she gave me that I would cherish is my name. And I mean, I make a lot of money in this position. My name means everything. I'm gonna do whatever I think is right, and I'm good in art. Thank you all for your prayers. I appreciate it. Remarks and requests of the public.
Everybody get a few minutes. As I was saying earlier, we are inundated with these things in the city. I would like to leave this, if we are to better the future, we must disturb the present. And it appears that the present here is being disturbed. What is a slap in my face, and it should be everyone sitting in here? We elected a mayor for the City of East Cleveland. This mayor comes whenever he wants to and leave whenever he wants to. And we sit and take this. The city cannot operate like that. He is positioned in this city in a position where as you become so disenchanted, you all say, what the use? Let's give it up. And that's what's happening here. We get money, and as you alluded to, the dumping and et cetera. That's a reflection of this administration. Dumping going on in the city, not cleaning up our city, not cutting the grass or whatever in the city, and not rehabbing anything in the city. We gets money from her, don't use it. And I'm not putting it all on him. This council bears part of the blame as well. Because they are the ones that has the authority and power in the city, not the administration. They authorize, they appropriate, they are legislating. I've sat here for ten years on the city, and this city has never looked like this. We have never had the blackness, the streets, you can't drive. Every street in the city is messed up, and nothing is taking place here. And that troubles me. And then we sit here and accept this. If he doesn't want the job, get to step it. And that's what needs to happen here. But then we sit around, we talk our both sides of our neck. And when he's here, the mayor, no, let him do his job. And if he doesn't wanna do the job, leave the city. Because he making it, and you sitting here, he trying to sell off every asset that we have in this city. And our land is prime land in this city. We are key locates. Everybody wanna get in this city. And we know who's behind it. And then we sit, some of us sit up here and just go along with this. It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. It's just a city sitting here, just going to ruin. And we don't demand nothing that's, if you don't demand nothing, you don't get nothing. If you don't stand for something... There it is. And that's what's going on here. It just doesn't make any sense, and I just hope that we will get... And then these folks hiding the back talking, but then when it comes to the nitty-gritty, where are they? I don't know. I've been here, I've been in this city perhaps longer than anyone in here. And I've seen it in its mayday. And I've, this is the worst I have ever seen in this city. And we need to get it together.
Brad Stinson, 1508 Taylor Road, East Cleveland, Ohio, council and sewer district and mayor's representative. I wanna speak to some of the things that you spoke about today. I don't feel that the public is getting a true representation of what this dump is going to be. A dump is a dump. We already have one dump in Ward Four. It's a garbage dump. This is gonna be a water dump. A dump is a dump. I live up the street from Page. I don't need a dump on Page Avenue, okay? That dump is going to increase the mosquitoes during the month when it does fill up, okay? They're going, it's all this, it's also going to put extra moisture in the air. East Cleveland has an eighteen percent population of senior citizens who have arthritis and rheumatoid arthritis. It is going to increase the seniors' arthritis situation in this city, okay? We were told that the, there will be no cost of maintenance. The research indicates that that's not true. The actual cost of maintenance in Cleveland Heights for something similar to this, that you all sponsored, was ten thousand dollars. There's a resolution to that effect. I wanna know where we're supposed to get the money for the maintenance when you all go away, okay? Because eventually, you're gonna go away. And also, I want to know, I'm concerned that this overflow originates, originates in Cleveland Heights and Shaker. And if that's where it's originating at, then that's where the dump needs to go. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to that effect when we get ready.
Yeah, well, these are the things that Charles home, 1508 Taylor Road. That was one question that I wanted to ask them. Is it up to them to do what they're doing? Or is this a government entity that's going on? Or is it a private entity? If it's private, then the city should have something to say about it, and they should have been doing some research on it. You know, this is all I'm gonna say. That's what I wanted to ask them. I wanted to ask y'all up front. Is this a done deal? Or is this a government thing? And do you all have to okay it? That's all I wanted to know about that. Now, also, I wanna address Mr. Omaze's problem, gives this. If somebody working for you, like everybody, and you hollering about they dissatisfied with you, they always, always to get rid of. Very easy. People that wanna get rid of, this Irish guy, they got rid of him very easily. You know, it's no big deal if he doing what he doing, he trying to run the city in a dump. Y'all claim y'all wanna keep the city, but how are you gonna keep it when you got somebody pulling it down? Only thing that I ask anybody, they saying, well, this would be the, if they come up with anybody that's wanna be the mayor and have some good idea to run the city properly, I would be number one in line to help them succeed. The problem is, these people been talking about recall and whatever. I just can't understand how simple it is to go out and get a recall, and they can't do it. I don't understand. For one reason, people's taught, and you get, everybody wanna pull that way and that way, trying to get to the same point we say. But nobody get together and say, okay, we gonna do this, and we gonna work together. Nobody wanna do that. So, as long as you pulling, again, going this way, going that way, it gonna continue, the city's going down. And just like he said, people want this property. It's a difference, it's a difference in want and need. I suppose, University Circle, sure, they may want this property, but we need financial assistance. We need help for the citizens, not that they don't need. They need land. They want land, but they can move south. It just, I guess y'all seen where they building those big apartment buildings and thing the last week in the city of Cleveland for University Circle. They don't have to come this way. They can starve us to death. And we'll be here, the land will be here, it was here when we, before we was born, even before we thought about being born. The land was here, and it'll be here when all of us gone. This land will still be here.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tom.
Chief of the East Cleveland Council, I don't see him now. My name is Widel Tom. I live at sixteen fifty-four Glenmark Avenue. What bothers me is about how things are looking. We haven't did a whole lot of improvements in the last three or four years. What is happening? Anybody blaming somebody else? So, what we wanna try to do is make some kind of start on these situations that we have here. First of all, I wanna thank the committee in, who helped us in part in taking the houses down and cleaning some of the streets. Now, they ain't cleaned all of them and filled some of the holes. We hadn't filled all of them. And secondly, I asked them to come down my council. You all know who your council is. Come down the street and take a look at them and see what's going on. Now, a lot of my councilmen, I ain't seen them down those streets, and I'm out there twenty-four seven. So, what I'm asking the councilmen to come down these streets and take a look at them and see what's happening, maybe we can get more done. Because a lot of this cleaning, I'm cleaning three lots myself on the street, and we can do better than this. We got a hole on Glenmark that near the railroad track. I'd like for them to look at it. They tore up half of the sidewalk, been three years ago. People's coming down the street, they got to walk in the street. My sidewalk's tore up. Now, they tore their house down. Then they left the sidewalk tore up. And people's coming down my street, now they got to walk in the street. The sidewalk is tore up, there's nothing there but the old and gray. Now, I constantly could've done something about this, but in the last three years, come on, y'all. Who is the councilman though? I won't pick him out, but come down that street and take a look at it, and I looking to see you, and report back to me what you see.
Good evening again. I just want to compliment my councilperson for Ward Three. I did get some grass cut on the street, and the street cleaned up somewhat. But I know that, you know, the city do not have the employees to do some of the things that we need to get done. But I feel that we are at the bottom now, as far as we can go as a city. So, I think, I don't think there's any place for us to go except for that. That's the only place for us to go. If University Circle, Inc. needs space, we have plenty of space. They can come east. I don't think they can go any other direction except east. They can come east under the name of the City of East Cleveland. My question also is, the Northeast Sewer District folks, if you have employees, do we receive any revenue or income tax or anything from them working in our city? So, I'm just wondering if that's, if we would, will we realize at least those dollars? But, thank you, Council Wheeler. I thank you, and we have a second for your member.
Bob Gregory, two oh three six Taylor Road. I am very upset about the slow pace of demolition here in East Cleveland. East Cleveland is sitting on a goldmine of development area. But they're not gonna, their brother's not gonna do anything until we do something. Day after day, I drive down, see the same old regular bills standing up. It should've been gone. Now, East Cleveland's supposed to be getting money for demolition from Arma Budish, crazy. We can dig out of this mess, we're gonna pull it, pull it together. That's all I gotta say.
My name is Ephraim Abdullah, eighteen seventy-two, Glassmere. I just wanted to come up and give you guys words of encouragement. You are our elected officials. And as a resident, we all can look forward to seeing you more in support of your positions as well as the mayor's position, as well as our city. I know things can sound bad sometimes, but let's hear something good sometime, and let's step our together. You know, we don't wanna blame nobody. What we wanna do is handle the job. You all are in positions to handle this job. And I have been getting emails about these meetings and our piece of that, so I need my guy, I didn't see no more copies. So, I'll do a, thank you for appointing me to get with them. I will follow up on that, and I will come back and give you all an update. Is there a committee that I should report to, to give the updates of what's going on, or should I send it to, why don't I get my email? Send it to the clerk? I thank you all for your time. Thank you, City of East Cleveland, for coming out and supporting me.
Mr. Wheeler, good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'm Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler, my condolences go out to you and your family. You all have a great history here, and I hope that you will continue to carry that legacy here and do what you can do to assist us in Ward Three. I have a few questions. We haven't seen any demolition on Northfield in a long time. We got some houses that look really, really bad, and I'm surprised that there hasn't been any type of demolition on the street. And I wanna thank the service department for coming out, cutting the lots and doing cleaning. You know, I know you guys can only do a certain amount of things, and it is up to the administration because he's in charge of day-to-day operations. And I know you all do allocate funds and things that's necessary to run the city for him. We as citizens have to do what we need to do. Now, I ride the city a lot, and I'm looking at all the garbage and trash, and I looking over there where I live at, where these folks got these kids, and some of them on our street do try to keep the lines up, but they throw trash everywhere.
Everywhere.
And I don't understand that. You complain about they're not doing this and not cleaning, et cetera, but you're not, you contributing to the problem. You know what I'm saying? So, I appreciate when y'all come out there and, you know, clean the lots and whatever else, because they were in bad shape. And I understand the situation and what's going on. So, I'm not gonna bash nobody about what's going on now because we as citizens, some of us are the problem. Just like they dumping stuff, the minute y'all clean up, you see they gonna dump toilets and all kind of nonsense. Like I said, I ride the city every day. I see it. So, all I can do is keep everybody in prayer and the city in hope, and we can move forward. That's all you can do. There's no need to keep complaining, it's not getting us anywhere. You make a plan in a long time, and the city is at its worst. It is. I've never seen it look like this out of thirty-two years I've been here. But it is what it is. And until we make a stand as residents to assist them, to try to make this place get better, regardless of what the mayor does, this gonna be a problem. Because like Mr. Omaze said, if he don't like it, he need to move on. You know? But again, my condolences go to you, Mr. Wheeler. And please come in if you get a chance soon as... And please come in, if you get a chance, soon as you get yourself together. Take a look at that street and look at those houses. And I hope to God that they do not let nobody buy those houses. Because they are in really bad shape. And there's no telling what the bestest level or whatever is in them houses. And you know if you disturb a bestest, it's airborne. You know that. So I want to thank you all. You have a great night.
Mr. Townsman.
Good evening, Ms. Townsman.
My name is Laura Townsman. I live at sixteen fifty-four Brenner. I came to East Cleveland in January in eighteen sixty-six. And I have asked God to give me understanding because I don't understand why we have allowed things to go on the way that they are. Growing up as children, we were not allowed to get into grownups' conversations, but we could always listen in. And I, was one of the things that the ladies was having Bible study one day and I heard them say, you show me a lion, I'll show you a thief. You show me a thief, I'll show you a bear. So we have sit and listened to people that's supposed to be leading us stand right in our face and tell us a lie. We were at the Helen S. Brown Center. And someone asked our so-called mayor, was he running for mayor? He said, no. The next week, he put ourselves kind of jumped on the TV about the mayor at that time wearing a dress. What do I care about someone wearing a dress? At one time during biblical days, everyone wore the same clothes because they was out to kill the males. So they let their hair grow and they kept everyone in rows so that once they wanted to kill the children, wouldn't be able to tell whether they were male or female. And doesn't it describe God as male and female? I started to work with children when I was ten years old. I started two seventh school class because it was my mother's class because she became ill. So she asked me, did I want to take the class? I said, I can take the class, he said, you will have to read. So that's what you will do. You'll read to the children like your mother read to them. And the smartest child that I ever worked with in our daycare center, I worked in daycare for twenty-nine years at my church in Windbeere. He was three years old and he was able to read stories. I would play with him every morning, read them story and give them the book, see how much they could remember. So that was the first year I was ten years old. And he came in, he said, I didn't get a turn. I said, okay, you sit in the circle and I'll sit in your space. And he started to read. So the other two said, you know, I think he's reading. So I said, well, I'm gonna find out. So I turned the book to the middle, you read that. So she said, did his mother scare you that he could read? I said, no, but I'll be here when she pick him up. She said, you gonna stay this late? I said, I'm gonna go home and take a break and I'm gonna come back and be here. So when she came in, I told her I wanted to speak to her. So she said, what did you do? I said, what he did today, I wish we had three other children that could do the same thing. That way each teacher would have a help. So I just always ask God to give me understanding why things are going the way they're going. And when Brother Wheeler ran for mayor years ago, that was the only time that I wanted to do some extra things to help him. But there were so many people that didn't know who they were. So they wanted someone, was looking at someone to put in office due to the color of their skin, not to their knowledge. So that's why I have to always ask God to give me understanding.
My name is Paula Stanberry.
Ms. Stevenson.
I'm addressing this to the city council. I would like, I know you all have been, I'm speaking about Ward Three right now. The whole city of East Cleveland is a dump, garbage dump. But I'm speaking of Ward Three right now. I ride up and down Ward Three all the time. Do you know? I wouldn't want my animals to live on some of those streets. The peoples that's living on those streets, living in. I went to a lady's house, she was an elder lady, her and her husband. They, there's an empty house here and an empty house there and they living in it. Grass is all around those empty houses and you can't hardly get in their house for the grass. They ain't able to do for themselves. And that's, I'm just about all over the precinct of East Cleveland, three E. I'm speaking about three E right now. Well, the whole, the ward, the whole ward. Most of whole, I would like for you all to just to drive around to those streets and look and observe it. And I want to ask you all a question. When you do that, would you all? Ms. Townsman, Ms. Townsman, she tried to keep us up. We are nice over there. I live on a dead end street. I'm sitting in a spot. Two houses over here. Got a lot of garbage. It's just pathetic. I can't sit on my front porch. I can't barbecue in my backyard. I have to go to my sister's house to barbecue. It don't make sense for peoples to live like the way we are living. We can do better than that. We can do better than that. My mother always told me, baby, if you live, if you got a cardboard box, keep it clean around you. If I keep my little spot around me clean, your house filthy, your house filthy. I can sit up there, I could, it don't do no good. I could speak to my neighbor, clean this, clean that. I'm just as nice as I can be. Don't do no good. Get attitude with me. And I know that's a lot of people there. Now, I'm not gonna take my garbage to put it on your side. If I'm gonna clean my side and I say, you got garbage on your side, I'm gonna try to, well, come on, I'll help you get yours up. Just, we need to work together. And I bet you five to one, you all would want your animals to live like these peoples in Ward Three. And I know a lot of other wards is the same way, Ward Three. Peoples, we need to do something because you know there's diseases, everything.